Board meeting of the Board of Education for June 11th, 2020 is called to order. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider complaint number 2020-3 lodged by Mr. and Mrs. Macon. In response to the discussion at the meeting on January 21st, Mr. and Mrs. Macon agreed to extend the time for a board decision. We're now coming back to consider the complaint and staff's responses to the issues raised in complaint number 2020-3. In response to the discussion at the meeting on January 21st, Mr. and Mrs. Macon agreed to extend the time for a board decision. Welcome, Mrs. Macon. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider this complaint. In accordance with Board Policy 4.50.32P, the district sets forth the specific procedure for resolution of formal complaints by students, parents, or guardians, and people who reside in the district in order to resolve formal and informal complaints in a fair and timely manner. Some of the content raised in the Step 3 complaint is subject to an executive session specifically under ORS 192.6602B for complaints about a public employee. We will first address in a public meeting the components of the Step 3 appeal that are not complaints about a public employee. We will then move into executive session under ORS 192.6602B when we discuss those public employee complaints. Following the executive session, we will return to a public meeting to vote on this appeal. Mrs. Macon, you'll have five minutes to provide your comments to us tonight. Following your comments, we will take the next five minutes for board members to follow up with questions for you or for staff. So, welcome, and please feel free to begin.
All right, thank you so much. I'm just not sure at what point it goes to executive session because there's a number of issues that are all dissatisfaction with a variety of PPS employees throughout the complaint process.
Mr. Stillwagen, do you want to specifically go through how you have looked at the various different concerns raised within this one appeal? And what are subject to discussion in executive sessions? And what ones we can start out with?
Sure, Ms. Macon, I think there are some allegations specific to the principal and his performance specifically. And those would generally be, obviously, a complaint about a public employee. And that would be something we would typically address in an executive session. If there are other general complaints just about the responses and so on, I don't know that that would need to be addressed in executive session. But if you do have specific issues that you want to address about a certain employee, public employee's performance, or issues you have about their specific response, I'd ask that you hold those until you're done with your initial presentation, and then we can move to executive session. And then you could proceed with those issues in executive session, if that's okay.
Yeah, and I'd rather have as much of it available for a public record as possible. If I refer to Vernon administration, does that keep it something that could be on public record?
I think that's fine if it's just in general to a response you feel like you received from the district or from the Vernon administration. If it's specific to Mr. Kiefer's performance, that's something we should probably address in executive session. Is that distinction clear? I get that it's a little murky. But if you're really getting specifically to his performance as principal, then that, like I said, is appropriate to be heard in the executive session. If it's dissatisfaction with action or responses by district leadership or Vernon leadership, then I think that that is fine to address in your general statement.
Okay, I think I like the reference of Vernon administration, and then that way we'll just stay in public session.
That's fine. I think if it, like I said, if it becomes an issue where we feel like you're talking specifically about his performance, and it would be appropriate to be heard in executive session, I may interject and ask you to clarify or ask that we take it to executive session, okay?
Okay, that's fine. And then if I'm referring to someone else who is part of this process, like Dr. Amog Behin or Mr. Craig Quiller, am I also, can I not say their name?
No, it's fine. If you're just addressing the fact that they responded, and this is what they said, and I felt like it wasn't sufficient, that's different than saying, you know, this person hasn't performed appropriately, or I'm unhappy with their performance, and I want the board to consider their actions. There's a distinction there. I hope I'm making clear. Does that resonate?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, start the clock, I guess. First of all, my husband, Afrom Macon, said he is choosing not to participate in this today. He says he doesn't want to fight racism based on the rules of a predominantly white system. Those are probably my terms. But what I have to say is, I want to thank the superintendent for the current strategic plan that's come out, where he set a goal for black students of 60% proficiency. It's sad that that's a good thing, 60%, but I know that in our district, it's a lot lower than that. So, thank you to the superintendent for that. I want to reference back to Mr. Ron Herndon, who published an editorial back in, yeah, August of 2019. And he said, or he demanded that anyone who's going to be writing curriculum for black students should have an 80% success rate teaching black students. And I thought that was very notable from Mr. Ron Herndon. I thought that was something we should think about. And I think the curriculum of the district is written by just whoever feels like writing it. Like, they put out general calls, like, hey, who wants to work on the new GBC? And anybody can show up. And I think we should look at that, who is writing the curriculum? Who's guiding the curriculum for students when we know which students are not being served? And curriculum, of course, is just one piece of how we need to better serve students. To narrow it down at Vernon, I'm seeing the goals being set is like 32% from grades three to eight for math proficiency. And so when you think about numbers that are around 60% and 80%, and now we're looking at, like, the goal is 32%, that's heartbreaking. In Mr., I'm sorry, is Mr. Craig Quiller, is he a doctor or mister? How should I refer to him?
Hello, Ms. Macon, how are you? You can call me Craig, that's fine. Firsthand basis is perfectly fine with me.
Thank you. And how do you pronounce your last name? Is it Quiller?
You're close, Quayar, Quayar.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, I mean, you cited some statistics in here about, like, growth, and like, looking at the growth at Vernon and saying, like, I think it was in math, maybe they grew by 3.8%, but it's out of 61 students, that's maybe one or two students. So again, calling that growth is just heartbreaking because we're not serving those students. And I think one of the solutions offered was more testing those students. And I'm just going to swing over to my handy stack of books I got here at home that I love to read on equity. And none of those books says more testing is the answer for black students. We need to test to track what we're doing, but more testing is also heartbreaking. Some of the statistics that we looked at in these different reports show the enrichment programs, the after-school programs of Vernon, just in one year, getting like 8% more white. So again, what is happening at the school? When we say there's work to be done, but the district has trust in the administration, and we're doing the work, working with Mr. Logan, working with Keely Simpson, but what is happening at the school? There's reference to the affinity groups of parents. And I raised this issue in an email. There's a texting system that the school can send out to parents to try and get involvement. This year, as parent of a black child, I didn't get any texts inviting us to have any kind of participation or input. Yet in the last month, there's two texts sent out, please help support the PTA, please become an officer of the PTA. So this is a resource of the school that could very well be used to support black student economics, and it's just being left untouched. The affinity group of parents for black students, as the report says, is maybe four to five people who attend. It's said once, there was maybe 12 people attending. At least two of the meetings in the year was canceled. It's just a resource that's going untouched. There's mention of improvement science methods, which is interesting. And I talked to somebody who's teaching that at PSU, and improvement science, my understanding is pulled from the business community, where it's look to the end user, look to the customer, and find out what they want. So then we should be again asking students and parents, what's working for you? As a parent of a black child, I've had, no one's reached out to us to say what could be working for your student. So what is the deal with improvement science? Is it just something that the professional educators get to go to conferences and trainings and put out their resumes to pad their resumes? Not going to curse, but we know what this is. It's not reaching the end user, you're not asking the students and parents. And finally, I've got to get to this word of disruptive. Mr. Quayar, in your report, you said that it was valid to use this word. It was valid for Dr. Amog Behin to interview the PTA president. And that interview resulted in the word disruptive being used against my husband three times. And now it's getting repeated back. And you said Jenny Chandra's investigations showed that that was valid. And that is a lie. Again, I hate when my husband uses the word lies. It hurts me, I'm uncomfortable. The white person, I'm uncomfortable with this conflict. And I should apologize to him, and finally, I'm finally getting it, he's right. This is full of lies. If you look right back at Jenny Chandra's document, she said it was not appropriate for Dr. Amog Behin to contact the PTA president. She said she gave two rationales, and they were both proven false. So, Mr. Queller, you put the lie back into your report. So once again, my husband is disruptive, and he is the person who is fighting racism. And we talk about retaliation. And we say that if the district continued to just let this go, there's retaliation against our family. And it seems like, well, what's the big deal? Nobody's firebombing your house. But I'll just tell you, in the last month, my stepson's mother tried to join the Vernon PTA Facebook page, which says it's open to parents and community members. So, we should say parents and guardians. She lives in the community, she is my daughter's brother's mother. Now, maybe in white communities, that's not considered family. But in many communities of color, that is considered family. There's not a word for it in the English language, but that is family. They will not let her join the page, and they're giving endless ridiculous excuses about why. And they're claiming that's not a PTA page, but it's run by the woman who is the communications director of the PTA. So let's stop saying it's just run by any old parent volunteer, okay? And on top of that, this week, there was an email sent out by the PTA saying, we are canceling our meeting out of respect for the gentleman who was murdered. And I said, canceling the PTA meeting, what meeting? I didn't get notice of a meeting, I'm a PTA member. Where is this notice of a PTA meeting? It's not in any of the principals' emails, it's not on the webpage, Facebook page. I didn't get a text, I'm a PTA member. So what's this PTA meeting that you guys are canceling out of your great respect? And I wrote them an email over a week ago. What's this meeting that you're canceling that you guys didn't invite me to? Or maybe it was just a simple mistake. And for a week, they can't write me back and tell me where's this meeting that they're canceling. And then again, maybe that's just a small piece of retaliation and exclusion, but please take a look at it, take a look at that. It's exclusion and it's discrimination. And as a white person, I hesitate to say I'm being discriminating. But it's over the issue of my husband is a black man complaining about racism in the community. And it goes on and on and on, and y'all aren't doing anything about it. You're talking about reports about testing and percentages and small incremental change, or maybe one more black kid can get an education. Super disappointing, but I'm learning, it's not surprising. Guess that's all I got. Thanks. Happy to answer any questions.
First, I just want to recognize your point about the goals, which are also reflected in our board goals for student achievement. It was important for us to express our goals in terms of growth. But I don't think anyone holds those stated goals as our aspirations for our children. And I agree with you, I cringe every time we look at it. It's just a way to measure our growth. But I just want to really appreciate your point there that there is no ceiling on our expectations for our kids. I just want to recognize that. Okay, to our board, do we have questions of staff or of Mrs. Macon?
I have one question, and Ms. Macon, I appreciate you showing up. And I hope that you're feeling fully heard. What is the text system that's being used? And is that updated? And is there some reason, like, some parents are on it and some parents are not? I'd be curious to learn a little bit more about that system. I think I know about it from a parent perspective. But I always got the text, so I assumed everybody else got the text. Can you shed some light on how that list is populated? And do you think you've captured everyone in your learning community?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, Remind was something that was rolled out by the district as we went into distance learning. And so it actually started becoming auto-populated through synergy, so through the records that we had in the system. We weren't actually using that text system previous to the distance learning piece. We were using Messenger for email, but had not been using it as much for SMS because it was not something that we had found that was consistent or successful. So since we have gone into distance learning, we've started using Remind more regularly, and it's a great tool. And we definitely, if it's at our disposal for moving forward, we definitely plan on utilizing it moving forward.
Do you have a good idea of how many, what the percentage of parents that are subscribed to that service? Or like, do you know how many, what your open rate is? Do you have any way of knowing who's not included?
Yeah, the interesting part is, so Remind now, like, in the old format, a lot of people experienced that, where you had to, like, send a text to a number, or you had to accept. The one that's set up now, actually, everybody, my understanding, and David maybe knows about this in more detail, but my understanding now is everybody is a part of that, and they can choose not to receive the messages anymore. But it's, to my understanding, everybody's getting those. And I think to Barb's point, that's what the message that she received was something that went out to the entire community as those Remind messages had for that kind of thing, where we were doing that note. And that's been recent, and the piece where she had mentioned it, I think what she was saying is some people have utilized that as a tool where you could create a list and then add people to it, but they have to text, like, to a number to say that they're joining. And I think there was some reference to that because I think what, to her point, that somebody had said that it was too much work or it was hard, that wasn't a school thing. I think it was somebody that was in that meeting who had said about adding them. And Barb could clarify that in terms of what her experience was around that. But that's, we're just now starting to use Remind as a school Messenger piece. That's a new thing since distance learning has begun.
Is that 100% of your families, or is that everyone that has a cellphone?
Yeah, my understanding is it goes out to 100% of the families that are able to get the SMS text. And if somebody else has some clarity on that, that's what my understanding is.
Yeah, Director de Pas, this is Sean for Chief of School. Everybody does get those messages as long as their information is correct in the student information system, so it's pulled from that database. So as long as the phone number is correct, everybody would get it. And there are reports that are generated that show numbers that were kicked back so that the school can then correct or reach out to get correct information from families. That's been a little more challenging in this last 10 weeks because of, you know, schools' closure. But normally, it would be much easier to correct that information.
Thank you. So I have a, did you want to go ahead, Barb? As I say, because I have a question otherwise.
Oh, yeah, just a little bit more about using texting as a communication tool for families. Since distance learning, yes, Remind has been very rolled out district-wide, but before that, some teachers were using that. And before that, there was just the good old-fashioned texting. My daughter just finished second grade. Kindergarten, she had the privilege to go to Riddler, and they had a pilot program that was about attendance. And every day she missed a class, they would send a text, your daughter missed school. Every day she came back, the next day, we're happy your daughter came back to school. And periodically, your daughter is at 95% attendance. So that was a pilot program. I'm not sure what kind of resources it takes to do that. But just because we didn't have Remind more than 10 weeks ago doesn't mean there's not other ways people have been able to use texting to communicate with parents, which with cellphones is a primary way to do it. And I did mention in an email that I'm not sure if everyone saw it, but in the fall, I went to a parents of black students meeting, and there was only four parents there. And I said, why don't we ask the office to use texting and send a message to all the parents of black students about the next month meeting? And the response was something like, that's kind of a lot of work. Not from Mr. Kiefer, but someone else on staff.
So, can I call you Barb? Is that okay? I had a question. When I look through the complaint, and I think our first response, I don't know, is that me with the static or somebody else? When I look through the district's first response, it's clear that we missed some information. And then in other cases, it wasn't responsive. And, but following on that, the district had Jenny Chandra research some of the issues that weren't fully responded to in the first response. And there was an acknowledgement of a host of issues that you had raised, as well as an apology from the district. And the apology from the district was from February. And my question, and this builds a little bit along the dialogue that we had last time, that given just how we have to meet now, where these virtual meetings, that it doesn't seem the same when you get a trailing response that acknowledges some issues that you had raised and corrects some information that we hadn't got right or hadn't fully responded to in our first response. And so my question to you is, in what avenue would that feel responsive? Because I get, when I look through this whole file and, you know, buried in it, there is an acknowledgement of some of the initial issues you raised, which I think is, you know, I want to acknowledge that the staff did acknowledge the issues you raised around student growth, around racial disproportionality, and some of the after-school classes, and some of the classes. What would that look like? Because I feel like the district has in some way acknowledged it. Is it the way it was acknowledged? Or is it the format? Or is it, you know, just, this is, you know, every type of communication is not to the standard we want them to be? And, you know, now that we're in a virtual environment.
Yeah, well, thank you for reminding folks that several things were pointed out as errors or misreadings, mis-speakings. I mean, Dr. O admitted she didn't read our complaint, and she wrote a step-two response and tried to say she didn't receive it. And someone had to dig back and show that the email went to you. And how are you writing something where you didn't even read the original complaint? So it's pretty hard. I don't know. I mean, things are acknowledged, like, we have a lot of work to do. These statistics are not great, whether it's academic or whether it's participation by race, it's being acknowledged. And then it's like, we're working on it, we have these plans. You know, I think it'll be acknowledged when we see the scores jump up, when we see students of all races proportionally participating in things that can actually benefit them academically. And then when we can get some response to things, when our families see retaliation, little bit by little bit, and there's no... Yeah, and I think treating students like as numbers too, and not really looking at that in the school climate. And sometimes that's a hard thing to capture in a report. So, I mean, I think we'll be happy, we'll be satisfied when we see, not just talk about changes, but changes.
Thank you.
I have a question for, I don't know if this is you, Dr. Bird, or Keely, or Carl, but with regard to the district's, the relative autonomy of the PTA. Can you just comment on the degree of influence or control that the school or the district has over the activities operating in the name of a school PTA?
Sure. So, good evening again, Mrs. Macon. I do want to mention about the PTA complaint that you mentioned when you were speaking about people not being able to join the group. And so I did send a letter to the PTA leadership last week asking them to change the name of that Facebook page because even though it does say in the information section that it's not an official PPS page, I can see how that, it does use the name Vernon, IB Community School, I think is what it's called. So I did send that request to them, and they have reached out. So I have further discussions planned with them so that we can make some progress on that. However, the PTA is an independent organization, so they are not part of the school district. So we have asked them to make that change, and we'll keep you updated on that progress. I also, Chair Constance, if I can just reference one more thing that Mrs. Macon talked about in the report that you got. I just want to, first of all, acknowledge that, yes, the district has made mistakes in the investigatory process. Some of the people on my team are responsible for that, and I apologize for that. And however, in the report that you received dated June 4th from Dr. Quayar, those were just summaries of all of the investigation. That was not saying that we agreed with it. That was just a summarize, a summary for you to just kind of go over the history of it. It was not intended to restate that it was a fact. It was just a summary of the previous reports, and then the recommendations came at the end. So I just wanted to just acknowledge those mistakes and also talk about the report.
Hi, Ms. Macon, it's Craig. I just wanted to reiterate what Dr. Bird said. What was stated in that summary for the board was just restating the former responses into one document, so the board had the information on one document. It was not us saying at all that Mr. Macon was disruptive at all. We were just completely reciting what was initially written in the former reports. And that was also why we also attached both of Jenny Chandra's reports as well, because Jenny Chandra's reports absolutely clearly illuminated a lot of missteps in the investigatory process, which Dr. Bird and I then had to address through accountability measures to make sure that those mistakes would never happen again. I just wanted to acknowledge that, Ms. Macon, and very, very, very sorry for the way you and your husband and your family feel during this time, especially during this process. We are continuing to try to do better and improve the process, so it's absolutely more service-oriented for our families first and foremost. And we're working on that, and you have our commitment on that. But I just also wanted to restate that as well, Ms. Macon, but thank you.
I appreciate that, but in light of a previous board meeting where Julia said that board members are not required to read all the documents to prepare for a meeting, to say that Jenny Chandra's thing is attached, but this document says disruptive, and Mr. Macon was not removed from the PTA meeting, as if he was claiming he was, when everyone claimed he was, we're not claiming he was. So, I mean, I see what you're saying, this was supposed to be recaptured, but you never, Jenny Chandra rebutted it, but this doesn't. And so if a board member's like, well, here's a nice, all I have to read is six pages instead of 40, they're going to read this, and this makes it sound like he's disruptive, and he's lying about, he's accusing Mr. Kiefer something he didn't do. So that's just the, and I realize you have a lot of things other to do other than write these reports, but...
Well, no, Ms. Macon, you bring up a very good point. And I think that's absolutely something that we will take into consideration for how we can make sure that we're illuminating the factual information of all the reports into a more succinct document so it stands face-first in terms of what all the reports share. I am taking that feedback, and I will work with our Chief of Staff to make those revisions in our process, but thank you for that.
Do we have any other questions from the board before we go into executive session to discuss the other aspects of this complaint?
So I have one other question. It may not even be a question that could be answered now, but I think it's kind of a broader framing question. Because when I look at, there's sort of two, you know, a number of areas in where you see essentially some segregation, racial segregation or disproportionality of involvement. But they involve two different categories of activities. And one are like school-based activities, so choir or classes that happen during the school day, ones that, you know, the district has full control of and can be fully accountable for what's happening in those classes and, you know, who we encourage and support.
what what's happening um in those classes and you know, who we encourage and support to be in those classes. Um, and then there's this other um category um that have been raised, Chess for Success, Battle of the Books, in which um we have um less control over because they're partners with the districts that are providing those services. And I say, I don't I don't know that it's fair to ask for a response of, you know, how do we, in cases in which we have less control, I don't know if it's fair to be asked in this forum and expect an answer right now. But I think it's worth thinking about, because I I do think we fully accept and are accountable for what's happening during the school day with our classes. But these other groups that we, you know, sometimes we're providing case, we're providing contracts and um a, you know, the access to the students and facilities. Um, how do we sort of elevate and lift up, you know, our values um the same way we would for things that are happening during the school day? And I don't know if that's a question for Craig, the superintendent. Or Sean?
Yeah, so I would say, um, thank you, Director Bryn Edwards. Um, yeah, so the uh after school programming is is um is run by SCI, as we all know, and that's a a partner that we've had that's worked in the district for many years. Um, but that is not, that's not to say that it's uh devoid of our input and our oversight. That those are activities that are happening in our schools. And uh there is a coordinator at the school that um we uh work with to talk about programming. Programming is generally based on student interest and um uh I'll let uh Principal Kiefer talk about the process that they go through to identify those activities. But it is a it is a partnership. Uh, so we do um give input to the to our part to our partners and I'm ensure that the uh programming is it meets the needs of the students at the school. And generally, after school programs, they really are driven by student interest. Um, so if for the program to be successful, there have to be a certain number of students that participate. So I'll let Mr. Kiefer talk about the particular um uh process at Vernon.
Excuse me, just a second. Um, I just want to clarify, Ms. Macon, do you want to um, do you feel, do you want to specifically address aspects of the complaint that pertain to Mr. Kiefer's um performance, in which case we'll need to recess and go into executive session and probably need to do that now or um or not? If not, we we can continue this discussion. I don't, if you want to, we're absolutely prepared to do so, but I wasn't it wasn't entirely clear to me.
I think let's stay in this session. I'm, the the problem is with the institution. Leaders of institutions have a heavy responsibility to shift it when it's not serving the students, but it's the whole institution, it's the administration, it's everybody, including myself as a parent.
Okay. And then I also wanted to ask um board members, did you have any um questions specific to the concerns about Principal Kiefer um that would necessitate going into executive session? Or is everyone comfortable if we continue the conversation?
I'm I'm comfortable uh continuing. Um, I also want to say about the bucket drumming program. If if that's such a problem, and it's not a problem for uh most of the members of the community that participate in the program. Um, it's it's ironic that we would want to challenge a program that's so popular for, you know, our African American students. Um, why would we get rid of that? So um, I'm I'm happy continuing in this session or deferring to what everybody thinks, but I do want to bring that up because that program is important to the kids that participate in the program. And if we're going to be student centered, then we need to talk about, talk about who's who's hurting when we play.
Want to go?
Yeah, the the buckets are a violation of PPS policy. And just because you guys have been doing it for a long time, that doesn't mean that it's okay. Um, and for you to speak out on that, on an issue where white kids are playing instruments is pretty sad. Mr. DePass.
Bye, you're going to go to my pride, bye.
Okay, we'll see you later. Now, if you look at it, I could give you the policies that they are violation of if you don't recognize what the policies are. Just because SCI is doing it, that doesn't mean that it's it's viable to do. It says everything in the policies and in the programs that we have to increase everything to make the uh test scores and make it equal to the to the black people or the kids that's been that's failing. It's a violation of policy. And the DOJ will see that. If you guys want me to, I can send you the policies that it's a violation of. Just because someone's black, that don't mean that they can violate the policies. That's the same thing you guys used in the Jefferson rape case. You guys said it was okay because touching little girls was a part of policy. It's not.
Part of black culture.
It's a part of black culture. Touching kids is not a part of black culture. Playing buckets are not a part of black culture. You said that. You guys said that in the report. So the Soden Board Report clearly mentions that it's not cultural, it's not artistic. These are all of the things that were written into that you guys originally said. It's not cultural, it's not artistic, it's not, what was the other one?
From Broadway.
It was not from Broadway. It's not, it's not. So there's no reason to have it in there. Just because somebody liked it, let's make it better. Can the kids could also eat cake all day? My daughter would like to eat sugar all day. That's not right. So you wouldn't have the kids in there eating cake all day, just because someone gave it to them. So you have to think for the betterment of people in the community. Your kids are not playing buckets. Nobody on here. Your kids are not playing buckets. So why are you having the people that look like the people that's failing the test the most in these programs? Where's your, where's your high expectations for the kids? That's all I got. I'm putting the Kia cabinets together. Um, oh, it's frustrating. It's been four days and I haven't put one cabinet together. I'm gonna ride the bike with the baby. High, high expectations.
Do we have any other questions of from the board or um Ms. Macon, are there any central pieces of your appeal that you feel we haven't addressed?
I'd just like to reiterate the same thing. The the response from I think Mr. Kiefer and others has been like, it's a student interest or people in the community are giving us a hard time saying that it's important to the families. And again, just like because something is important. I mean, bigamy was important to Mormons. We still pass laws saying that's not okay for those. It's not when we analyze it. Not the same.
This isn't bigamy, bigamy, it's bucket drumming.
Correct. But the the argument is something that they like, the kids like, it's based on choice. And so just basing on choice is not something that 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 alone is not something that we should have in the schools after school, just because the kids like it. We otherwise we'd have video game playing. We're not doing that.
I I actually had a question that Ben was going to follow on about before we went into discussion about whether we need to go into an executive session.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to add one more thing to that, the idea of just because they like it, because anything that students can benefit from bucket drumming, they can benefit from real drumming, from African drums, from Drumline, anything that they benefit, whether it's leadership, working in a group, physical movement, anything they can benefit from bucket drumming, they can get that same benefit out of playing drums that then they could take into another venue or drums where they feel like, hey, society values me, they're giving me something of value, they're not giving me a three dollar piece of plastic. And we have to give kids something that shows them we value them.
Thank you. Can I, um, Ben, I had had the question about the after school and I think Sean gave the overarching like here's the um, here's the district's um sort of framework and maybe at Vernon, the things that um you and the staff are doing for things that we don't control that's in the classroom, but after school, um, just there were, you know, questions um about the Battle of the Books. And again, I don't, this isn't just a Vernon issue. I think this is, this is a broader PPS issue, but um, if you speak to the Battle of the Books, the um, you know, Chess for Success, ways in which um Vernon can um have after school programming that or support after school programming that serves um all of our students?
Yeah, I want to make sure to clarify a few things. I mean, as a regular part of the annual review of SCI programming, they reach out to families, they they connect with students and they try and do, they they really do try and have it be about student voice around creating those enrichment opportunities. And that's what they're supposed to be as enrichment opportunities. The kinds of things that you've talked about that then get folded into the school day. So we folded uh our band program into the school day because we didn't feel like enough students were having an opportunity for that. So we actually created that opportunity within the school day, which tripled the number of students who were able to participate and also made it a lot more diverse. And I will agree with Barb, if you look at participation, that we're not satisfied with when with different things like uh specifically Oregon Battle of the Books and uh Chess for Success not being as uh proportionate in terms of the community. And so, you know, the question is like, so what do you do? And you know, that's it, that's a a little bit more challenging in the sense since students are choosing. You know, we do teacher recommendation, teacher outreach, trying to have, push it out to different families around conversations around different things to participate in. But ultimately, people sign up for those opportunities. So we do look at that. And honestly, that was something that happened way back in two thousand and fifteen, because there was a concern that was brought up by uh Ephraim and Barb about bucket drumming back then. And we did, we worked with SCI to try and look over that and see, you know, what what the concerns were. And we always do that. I mean, I as a as a white male leader in a school, I recognize the privilege that I have. And I recognize the need for my myself to reflect and learn and also to think about how we can make sure to hold racial equity at the center of the work that we're doing. And so it is challenging. And you know, to Barb's point about, you know, incremental gain or growth, I mean, if you look at the growth percentiles for the last several years, you know, ours went from being lower than the district. Uh, it like twenty third percentile for, I think it was like twenty, twenty seven and a half percentile growth and the district was like thirty three and a half to the this past year being like fifty eighth percentile of growth. And the reason why that is important is if you maintain that high growth percentile, what you do is shift, right? You start to see those gains. And I don't disagree with her. We want it to be more than one or two or three kids. We want it to be lots of kids. We want it to be the majority of our kids. And so that is incremental. And that's hard because this, there is urgency around this work. And so we recognize that. And it is a district wide piece. Um, and it's forced me to do a lot of reflection. Um, Director Bryn Edwards, I mean, I, you know, have looked at literally, and you all can do this too, the state report cards for every single school in the district that has a high number or a high percentage of African American students. And of all of those schools, in math in particular, there are only a couple that have had growth in the past three years, and that's not good enough. So this definitely is a district wide issue. And even though we've had some growth, it's not enough. So I I don't disregard that. And I I will say, and I appreciate Barb's suggestion around this. We will make better use of her mind, because I do agree that cell phones are a key communication tool for families.
Thank you, Principal Kiefer. Um, I think we're going to have to come to um a close here and um to a vote unless there's any other um pressing questions. All right, then, um, the board will now vote on resolution number six zero three zero, resolution to uphold or reject the superintendent's decision on a step three appeal complaint number twenty dash three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Director DePass moves and Director Bailey seconds the motion to adopt resolution six zero three zero.
Director Constance?
Yes, can you hang on just one second? Um, before we vote, I also, I want to recognize, I think that uh Director DePass well, go ahead, Director Bryn Edwards, what were you going to say? I think Director DePass is going to offer um, I don't, a friendly amendment or a statement on behalf of the board after we vote. But I'm sorry, Director Bryn Edwards, did you want to?
Yes, I I would like um to have the resolution amended um to add some uh, some uh language in the um upper section and then some findings that um reflect, I think the um staff summary we received has some acknowledgements and also some recommendations. And to include that in there as a um indication that while we're um, the decision is to uphold the superintendent's recommendation, that we're also acknowledging some things. And I don't know if um, I could hand it um.
I don't, we we haven't voted yet on whether or not to uphold or reject the superintendent's
Right.
decision. Director DePass, do you want to bring forward the language that you had and add it to the resolution or?
Yes, I would. Excuse me, I'm having problems going back between my screens. Um, and want to make sure I'm unmuted. I have some, I have some edit I would like to add. Um, if I may.
So let's table, let's table the um resolution that we have now regarding our vote on the appeal and um uh, I'd like to move that we consider an amendment by Director DePass. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Director Bryn Edwards, Bryn Edwards seconds. Um, okay, Michelle.
Okay, so um in the very top piece above the resolution, um, I'd like to acknowledge that the the district acknowledges the racial disproportionality in the makeup of students participating in various school and sun programs and will work with the Vernon community to assure that all students have access to programs that enrich their learning. And that had to do with uh just being a little bit more explicit um in our language um about the disproportionality, but also recognizing, I think that the kids are drawn to this program um largely because of the leaders of that program and the after school program. And so it's it's valued, it's valuable to the children, to the students and um we can work to uh with the community to assure that all students have um enrichment programs that are, you know, culturally sensitive and enriching. The last piece um was just in the in the resolution to add the language that says the board acknowledges that the district in its February twenty first twenty twenty letter to the Makens apologized to them for a chant that occurred during a school assembly. While it was not planned, supported, or encouraged by Vernon staff, school and district leaders are responsible for the activities that occur in our buildings and school sites and then for for ensuring that inappropriate incidences are not repeated. Um, so as district leaders, just to acknowledge that the buck stops with us, um, we we take full responsibility um for for how how we handle this and and to apologize for the Makens, to the Makens.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So um, I'm sorry, Director.
Yeah, I'd like to add one other thing in the resolved part. Um, and this goes again to um, you know, continuously approving and being sort of on the record that we support that. Um, so that we, I would like to add in the resolve part that um the the board um supports the implementation of the recommendations made to address the issues raised in the complaint.
Um, I I have a question about that, Julia, just because isn't that by upholding the superintendent's response, isn't voting to uphold saying we support the recommendations in the superintendent's response?
Um, I think we should be explicit about it. Um, that we support the implementations of recommendations. There's some very specific items in there.
Um, so I I think um, let's vote on the amendment that we have on the table, which is Director DePass's amendment that um includes the piece about the enrichment activities as well as an apology for the harm that was caused during um the uh performance during the school performance. Um, I'd like us to vote on that and then we can revisit whether we want to add something else that just reinforces um the commitment that staff has made have made.
Chair, Chair, Chair Constance, I'm sorry, just from a process standpoint. And I apologize if I missed. Uh, I know we've all been getting a lot of emails about budgets, so I I don't know if this came around earlier. I I haven't seen these amendments in in writing. I did, I did see that Director DePass, um, there was an email just from right before this meeting that had some of this language. So I was, as she read, I was able to to read along. But it's challenging since we're not in the same space to sort of look at a piece of paper. Is it possible to get, before we vote on this, just to get the actual written language? before we vote on this, just to get the actual written language either put up on the screen, which I would be fine with shared, or emailed quickly by Roseanne to those of us before we take a vote? I apologize. I just, I heard it. I think I supported. I just want to make sure.
Director DePass, do you want to paste those in the chat?
Um, I can paste them in the chat. It's pretty ugly if I share my screen.
I don't think the public, I don't think the public can see the chat, though. So.
So maybe, maybe we could share the screen, or even, even take a minute just to clean it up.
If you give me just a minute, I can clean up what I've got.
And I also think it'd be good for the public to see as well.
Absolutely.
And Michelle, I can also post it if you want me to.
Do you have the, the resolution with my edits in it?
I do.
That would be fine with me. I'm tech challenged.
Okay, hold on. I had a question about the language of where it says the buck stops with the board, because there's quotes, and then there's dots, and then I'm not sure where the quoting of the letter ends and the continued narrative of the amendment is. So that was my one question about the language.
You're looking at their earlier email?
I made some edits at about five minutes before our meeting. So.
We can just somehow get a screenshot of what you read, which is what we're, what's on the table.
Yeah, so my question has to do with, we're quoting that letter from, I'm switching between, between February 21st. And so there's, there's a quote from that letter, but there's no end quote. So I'm not sure when the quote from the letter stops.
Okay.
That was my question.
So Ailee, if you, do you have the packet in front of you?
I have the email that Michelle sent out.
Okay, because one of the.
With her thing.
Yeah, the thing that got, that's removed is, there was a.
I'm not concerned about the dot, dot, dot. I'm concerned about where the quote from the letter stops. Is it that whole, is it the whole thing then after this occurred during the school assembly? Is all of that a quote from the letter that went out on February the 21st?
There's no end quote, I think is.
So would it suffice for you and others if Michelle just read again exactly the two components of her amendment, even describing punctuation, and then we can vote on it?
Or I think I can share my screen. I'm just trying to figure out how to do it. I'm on, I'm on a learning curve. Present now.
Just a moment. Can you see that?
No.
No. Obviously not Google Meet proficient.
I think it's pretty, it's pretty succinct.
I think. Not for me, it's not. I'm just trying.
Not the process, but your, your two amendments. I think if you want to read them again for us to digest them again verbally, then I think we're good to go.
Okay, so the resolution says the Board of Education upholds the superintendent's decision of the Step Three Appeal as the final decision and supports the implementation of recommendations made to address issues raised in the complaint. The district also, the board also acknowledges that the district in its February 21st, 2020 letter to the Makens apologized to them for a chant that occurred during a school assembly. Quote, "While it was not planned, supported, or encouraged by Vernon staff, school and district leaders are responsible for the activities that occur in our buildings and school sites and for ensuring that inappropriate incidences are not repeated," end quote. As district leaders, the buck must stop with us. We take full responsibility for the harm we've caused. I'm sorry. We, we take full responsibility for the pain that this has caused your family and the way that we've responded to you. While an apology may not make you whole, we want you to know we are deeply sorry. The district also acknowledges the racial disproportionality in the makeup of students participating in various school and sun programs, and will work with the Vernon community to assure that all students have access to programs that enrich their learning. And I'm happy to put a copy of this. You say not in the chat, but is there a better way for me to share this?
Take a vote now unless anybody feels uncomfortable with understanding exactly what it is that we're voting on in terms of an amendment to this resolution.
Well, Chair Constan, I don't mean to be difficult with that. What was just read was not actually the original amendment from Director DePass, and it sounded like it also included the amendment from Director Bryn Edwards. So I just want to be really clear about what we're voting on. But that was not, and some of the words were a little bit different than I think the first time. So.
I agree. I really need to see it in email.
So maybe, Michelle, you could just drop it in the chat, and then Roseanne can grab it out of the chat and put it on the screen.
I will do that. It's.
Was it, was it different? I mean, it seemed to me like it was different, too. Is that correct?
Different because I reversed the order in which I read the two statements. But I'm, I'll look for it now. I'll paste it into chat. And then, and I'm also having connectivity issues, it looks like. So.
And chalk, right?
And then while you're doing that, I could maybe answer Director Scott's question. You asked, when did the February 21st apology end? And it ends at the word repeated. That, at least the quote from the apology that was sent to them. And then the rest after that is new language. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, but it is, it's a, okay, but it is a meaningful distinction in the sense that we're in this, so this is not repeating an apology that was previously made in a response. This is a new board apology that we are making here.
Correct. So you have.
That's correct.
The February 21st letters to the Makin, and then it start, the quotes start with while it was not, and that goes on. There should be an end quote after the word repeated. That's what that should be attributed to. And then what Michelle read after the word repeated is, you're correct, a new board apology.
So to be clear, the disrespectful action and the misstep we are referring to is the, well, actually, let me ask that question. What is that specifically referring to?
The chant that happened during a school assembly.
The children's response.
Okay, so that, that particular section is all contained. It's about the chant and the response. It's not, it's not a separate apology and a larger, larger issues.
No, it's specifically to the February 21st communication to the Makens was, had a section about the chant with the acknowledgement from the district that we have ownership of that because it happened during a school assembly, you know, in, under, under the sort of framework of a district event.
So end quote after the word repeated that just appeared, that's the part that comes from the staff report. And then what follows is an apology from us, the board.
And it looks like I, that got cut off. Huh. Doesn't look like the whole, I didn't paste the whole thing. Sorry.
It's not your fault, Director DePass. It only allows you to pay so much text. So if you copy the rest, you should be able to get it in there.
Thank you. I always think it's me. So. Just a moment. Thanks for your patient, patience.
As district leaders, the best, the buck must stop with us. While an apology may not make you whole, we want you to know we are deeply sorry. We apologize for this disrespectful action, and will learn from our missteps. The district acknowledges the racial disproportionality in the makeup of students participating in various school and sun programs, and will work with the Vernon community to assure that all students have access to programs that enrich their learning. Oh, Roseanne, you even put it in the form of a resolution.
Thank you.
That's Kara doing that.
Kara, way to go. This is still, what we have on the table now is this amendment. Everyone had an opportunity. It's on the table. So now would be the time for any further discussion on the amendment itself.
Um, I don't think the screen can be enlarged at all, but it's really tiny.
Well, I do believe it is a faithful recreation of your, what you pasted.
I'll look at it on my own screen.
Kara, good job.
It does.
Something missing.
I think that was the.
And it's also missing the end quotes after repeated.
How can you read that?
End quote, and then, I have my glasses on. And.
So do I, but I can't read it.
That help?
There we go.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So it looks like the curb needs another R. There we go. Oh, my.
And if that's the.
Explain.
If the quote ends at repeated, you don't need the ellipses. Just put a period there.
Yeah, the ellipses were because there was more to the apology and the actual 21st letter, but it actually was talking about students. So it really should just end there.
And then under the resolution part, doesn't it just stop, the Board of Education upholds the superintendent's decision of the Step Three Appeal as the final, and then Julia's amendment comes in?
Right now, we're just considering this amendment that we see above. So if we have no further discussion.
Actually, just a process question. Wouldn't our apology be in the resolved, not in the recitals? That's a parliamentary.
I think.
Question.
Sorry, guys.
I think it's, I think it's fine. I mean, first of all, let's just approve this as an amendment, and then we'll go back to the underlying resolution, which is asking whether or not we uphold the superintendent's decision, which will include.
Okay, I think that's the wrong order, though. I think, I think we should have, I think the, that's, that's part of the resolve, not part of the recitals.
It could be, it could be either way. But let's, we, let's approve this language, and then we'll get back to the underlying resolution, and we can decide where we want to put it. All in favor?
Amy, sorry, just to be super clear, we are only considering this first paragraph from the board to learning. We're not considering the part that says resolution or below, correct?
Correct. And we are not voting on the superintendent's recommendation. All in favor of this amended language, please indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Please indicate by saying no. Okay, this amendment passes by a vote of seven to zero. All right, now back to the underlying resolution that is asking the board to uphold or reject the superintendent's decision on a Step Three Appeal Complaint Number 2020-3. Let's include the amended language on the, in, in the resolution, 6030, not the recitals.
I was gonna, Director Constan, I was just gonna speak to that for, for Director Bryn Edwards. I, I think that's correct. I would put it in the resolution.
Yeah.
Sounds like we're ready to do.
Yep, we have this done. So all in favor of upholding the superintendent's decision, please indicate by saying yes?
Actually, Amy, remember, you said, once we adopted the language, that I could come back to the, the other issue. So before we move to voting on the whole resolution, so we have a, we have a staff report with a series of recommendations. It sounds like people may not want to put in, to me, it would make the resolution stronger that if we're supporting the implementation of the staff recommendations. If there's not, if there's a preference for board, board members not to put it in there, the other thing that I could do is, I guess, ask Dr. Crayar, who is the drafter of the staff summary, who is, and this is, this is, could be a replacement, I'm happy to do this, is who's accountable for these, implementing these recommendations that is in your staff memo?
That would be.
At the end of the day, because the Makens have said the thing they want is less words and more actions. And so these are the recommendations, which I do think address many of the issues they raised.
Yes, ma'am. I would completely agree. And I would refer that to Dr. Byrd as the one who is accountable for all of our schools and DPS.
Okay, I don't need to have it in the resolution. But I think it's important that we acknowledge that there's recommendations and implementation, and that there's an accountability for them being implemented.
Agreed.
I think this is part of our broader conversation on the complaint process, too, that the board wants to be able to check back in to commitments that are made in the complaint process at points in the future. So just, just good practice.
Exactly my point, Chair Constan. We talked about that kind of system where we agree to come back to look and see what kind of progress has been made at some point in the future. And I'm still not sure whether that system exists or not. So that, we can take that offline, but let's see how we can make this, this happen.
Definitely a process improvement generally with the complaint system, complaint.
Not just complaints, but, but a number of issues that might not rise to a complaint that come up, and we express concern or, and or interest. And a year later, it's like, oh, yeah, what happened with that? And that's, we need to change that.
Right.
Sorry, Michelle.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think there's some interest in, I mean, there would definitely be, I would be interested in figuring out how to track and measure, you know, where we are along that spectrum in terms of implementing some of the things that staff recommended, whether that's six months out, or do some type of a process evaluation, or some way to measure where, you know, measure our impact in terms of these changes we're making. So that's not necessarily my job, but I'm interested in following the conversation. I'll.
Yeah. All right, voting now on Resolution 6030 to uphold or reject the superintendent's decision on Step Three Appeal Complaint Number 2020-03. Sorry, my son is calling. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's decision, please indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Any opposed to upholding the superintendent's decision, please indicate by saying no. All right, the motion passes by a vote of, sorry about that, of seven to zero. Mrs. Makin, I want to really thank you for your time and your thoughtfulness and I do hope that the process and the steps that the staff have identified, both at the building level and the commitments that our district staff have made, really do respond to the the important issues and questions you've addressed at Vernon. And we will, we will be paying attention as a board to progress there in in all ways, school climate, student achievement, health and well-being of of all our kids and families there. So thank you for your time. And board members, as you all know, we need to reconvene ASAP for our budget meeting.
Maxine is anxiously awaiting us.
She's feeling lonely, all right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all, I know this has been a lot of time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Makin.
Thank you.